All right, it's Monday, April the 29th. We have a special city council meeting and with that, we'll call the roll first.
May around.
Here.
Counselor Paul.
Here.
Counselor Phelps.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor.
Here.
All right. Was Mike on? No, okay. I wasn't sure if Mike was coming or joining us. So our first item on the special meeting is a memo that Jason sent to the council. That was in our packet. And we're explaining the reason for the meeting and the subsequent items on our agenda as well. So. If you have any questions about Jason's memo or that. Jason can answer for us. I think it's. It's a, it's a good historical background of how it got to this point and what happened back in April of 2023 with our building permit fees, zoning fees. So now we've, now that we've, back in April, we didn't have any big projects in front of us, you know, to really. Take quality time to look at them. So. And with the two big projects we have currently going on, these things kind of came to light that there was some really imbalance with our building permits as well as our zoning fees. So the building permits is, we're talking about two separate issues, the building permits, and then there's zoning fees. So they're, but in our 2023 adoption, they were combined together, weren't clarified against. So with what's being proposed, it separates those. So in light of what the fees that were. Paid for Two Sisters as both Glenn's coach. Tonight, we're going to discuss and I did not, I looked at. What should be our. Fees going forward and in the package shows how it's being proposed. And at the same time, we're looking at everything, both. The Two Sisters, the Beniki, Beniki Court Construction as well as building coaches as well. Ultimately, we'll take care of those at the end. So with that. Packet was a. Identifying the current building permits that we adopted March 1, 2024. Paid ones that building permits. But if you look at the, what's being recommended, we're looking at. We're looking at removing. The building permits as such on our current and supplementing those with. What CMS is proposing for the building permit fees. And then on the back section on page two, below the zoning section we have now is where we would consider adopting the zoning permit fees for both residential uses and for multiple family and non-residential. Given to us or that was off the Homestead County website. So those are the items of discussion. So we have. The packet is also a. CMS fees, which. I understand you're talking to CMS.
Is that what these are around?
Yes, those are the Oldstead County ones.
No, those are CMS.
CMS stuff, sorry, yeah.
They were different labeled, so it's certain.
Those are two CMSs. The CMS fees that we are looking at or considering are checking with CMS, there's. Have those are set for 21 other cities that they have contracts with. So they are using this and they continue to expand the fees on the other. Balance of 40 something cities that they do have. In their contract, the 21 of them have adopted these building fees on their. On those particular cities. Fee schedules.
I think also inside the packet are. The building fee schedules that there are for Rochester. And then there's also the building fee schedules that there are for Pine Island. Are in the packet as well for comparison of what we're looking at. Right now for where we're located at with Orinoco. And needing to be competitive with what we've got, so.
Right.
And then I also have included in the pack that I kind of was looking at some of them and, and we've got the CMS fees that they had recommended. That's in the recommendation and I also. Took a look and put in some recommendations that I had too after looking between Rochester and Pine Island. Needing to be competitive about 52 of what we're doing to make sure builders that come up can turn around and and look at that corridor and know that that's where we're at for being competitive with that. So that's also in, in the packet that was given out. Also, I just kind of wanted to make mention too for the people that being recording and stuff like that are. Fees from 2023. Were basically a thousand dollars for the first million. And then $25 for every thousand dollars if there is above the million dollars. So that original permit fee for building permit fees for Two Sisters was $38,500. So that's, you know, when I, that's what kind of drove everything to come for my concern of what there is and what we had. Kind of looked at and like Ryland said, I, I, I agree with exactly how we put that when we were looking at this in 2023. We really didn't have any other buildings that were going because we didn't have our sewer project that was there. And hence, we just didn't pay any close attention to what there was for those fees because nobody was going to build. Until we got the sewer that was, was in there. And it was when Two Sisters came that we were able to identify and take a look and, and and go a little bit deeper to what our, our building fees were.
And I kind of look at it as, you know, if you, if you think of it, our fees in terms of, of banks. You know, if you've got banks in a 10 or 20 mile area, you know, all those banks are, well, forget 10 or 20 mile area, but you, you look at the interest rates that banks charge. You know, if you've got one bank that's going to be way above and beyond, nobody's going to borrow from that bank. And I see that same thing with this situation. I think we have to be competitive and not, not shoot ourselves in the foot.
I think everybody would agree with that and I think they, we all would agree that the. Thirty-eight thousand is not, there's two things, one is the numbers outlined. Secondly, the, the way if you progress through the different values, they got higher or in fact, they should be getting lower. As Jason mentioned in his memo, so. But I do. I do think we, by having CMS, they're the building services company and so I'm, I'm sure I would think that they. It's their business to have rates that are competitive for all the different cities that they do. Offer their schedule of building services for, so.
Which also brings another point too, I believe in our special meeting that we had with, with CMS when, when we were going over their contract. One of the requests that Paul had at that time was to see all the competitive bids that there were for the other. People that were, were involved with, with that for the inspection and we have yet to get that. So I'd like to have those competitive fees. For I believe it was for Minstat and also for Homestead County. So that we can at least compare all of those fees together. And, and I know that Renee was really busy during that time, but you know, maybe we can at least bring those forward now. To, to get those fees that we need, which is you had requested Paul in that, that special meeting that we had. So just to bring that up to speed too. You know, on, on looking at, at the fees when you, you compare. What there is for the proposal recommended right now for CMS that we're, we're putting in our, our booklet. pamphlet and, and so from two million to five million dollars, basically the way CMS had requested is basically $6,950. Plus 225 per 1,000 over the, the $2 million mark. So that's what CMS had in there. And so if you figure that out on what's proposed, it would end up being fees, building fees for, for Two Sisters at, at $8,075 when you figure that out. If you look at figuring it out with the fees that were with Rochester. Again, using the same two and a half million dollars that you guys had, had given us for the number that there was. Rochester's fees on their fee schedule would be $6,549. And if you looked at Pine Island, it would have been $7,664. For that. So just to give you some comparison that there is between those, those different towns and what their fee schedules are.
We're basically going from $25 per thousand down to seven, like $5 per thousand over.
No, it's, it's actually, you're looking at the $2.25 over the 2 million mark, okay, per thousand. Yeah, off of that. I had turned around and, and took a look also with, with what the proposal that I had on it was, was looking at. Kind of splitting the, the base fees that there were between Rochester and Pine Island and having a base of $3,549. And then I had, and that was at a million dollars and then it would be for 225 for every thousand above that. So if you look at that, the one that I had kind of come up with was $6,924. You know, again, it's, it's a difference of where you're at, but, but considerably different. And then you can see that on, on my printout that there is.
The recommended.
Well, well, the recommended was what was built on CMS and, and again, that's, and then I had just put in the other ones. I just didn't identify it when it was in my email and it's, and come out that way.
Well, I see the difference between the current fees and the recommended is the only thing that's ever been changed are the building permit fees, correct?
Well, that was, that was the main, main issue that there was that came up with Two Sisters was, was a. You know, the building fee. I know some of these other ones were, were, if you go back again to like Rochester, the way that they have things broken down. We get to that. They had again, what it would be for, for the building fees and then again, they have plan reviews fees that there are that are 35%. And building review fees, they, they have a couple for the master plan and percent, but that one was also. The percentage is down there, so I was just looking, you know, right now to identify what, what the initial cost was, which is what came up with, with us on, with Two Sisters, so.
Okay, so you get this plan review fee, it says 65% of the permit fees, so. They're going to, that's going to be tacked into that on top of what you're saying.
Well, it, when I was talking to the people over at Pine Island, they said that that became a part of the original fee that was there at 65% of that original fee that they were offered. And, and I'm learning too, as this goes along, and I'm not a master at what there is with this by anybody, so I just. Just by talking to the other cities that I'm trying to learn too with, with what's going on and what's happening.
So, so what you're, so are you saying that? The plan review fee comes up first, you pay the 65% for the plan rate? No. Let me, let me finish, let me finish. So you're saying with 65% pay that fee first, then that, then you just cover the rest of the additional fees? Is that how that works? This is probably, this is probably.
Not the expert on it, okay. The main thing that I was looking at was, was $25 per 1,000. Which was the main thing that came up first and, and to identify, you know. Like I said, I'm not an expert on the rest of it. That's the way it was explained to me, but I could. The person that explained it might have been explaining it differently too. So I'm, I'm not going to that point, I'm looking at what the initial cost that there is that if somebody is going to come and put a building in here, look at that building in, in Orinoco. We've got to be competitive to what our, our initial fees are. Otherwise, you're not going to have anybody come and want to invest in, in Orinoco.
I agree. Well, I guess, I think that's what CMS brings to the city is their experience, so.
And I'm, again, I'm, all I'm saying is, is that, and again, you're seeing the difference that there is too with what CMS did and what, what they had for their recommended fees. I mean, you're, you're, you're off a little bit, but I'm just saying it's not to the degree from $6,000 or $8,000 versus $35,000, so.
I'm just, I guess I'm just concerned that 65% be, be tacked on top of what we're already looking at.
Again, it's going apples to apples and you have to look at what Rochester does, you have to look at what Pine Island does. You've got the fee schedules that are there in front of you, you can look at that, you can look at what it is for CMS. And so once you look at those for the building permit fee. Okay, I'm not doing the rest, I'm looking at the building permit fee, okay? That's what I'm addressing off of this to, to look at those.
Well, then, Counselors, if I may, just quick, if you go to the Orinoco or to the Homestead County website, it defines some of those things that are a bit confusing. The building permit fee, I think, is badly mislabeled, if you will, but it's industry standard. And the building permit fee is really, if you look on their website, it says it pays for the inspections performed during the project. Then the plan review is what happens to be able to get the project through its analysis to get the permit. So sadly, it's a misnomer, it's often confusing for those of us not in the industry. That's what the building permit is, is for the inspections and there's a, there is a cost for the plan review. That's 65% of what the building, the inspection fee is, if that adds clarity.
But again, we were way off by $25 per 1,000. I mean, that was, that was.
Do you know where that came from? That, that, I did not kind of see that.
No, 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 no. I, and then again, it was, I'll go back to what Ryland said and go along with that. When we were looking at this stuff in 2023, we didn't have any buildings that were coming in at all during that time and I didn't pay any close attention to that and and put any numbers or have a comparison that there was with Pine Island or, or Rochester at that time. It was just there and we were looking at what we were going to rent the park for, what we were going to rent buildings for here. Looking at those other fees which came into effect in 2023, different than what there was that came up with, with what this is, so.
No question, it's a matter of due diligence and. Done properly, so.
Well, that, that's, that's what we're actually going after is change that 25 to 225. Why make a motion to change that line alone? From, from $25 to $25 and 25 cents.
Well, you, you've got to, you got to break it up now.
We're talking about zoning versus building permit.
We're, we're doing, building permit owners, okay, for that. But it's, the way it's set up, I did it on a million up and if you look at the way CMS did it, they did it with a different structure. That, that's on there, so with the Two Sisters, you'd have to look at, at building number 13. Okay, where it goes 2 million to 5 million, basically 4,999,000. And there's the difference on a base rate from a million to 2 million, okay? So they went to that $6,950 under 2 million and then adjusted it at 225 for, for each $1,000 over that. If you would go back and look at the 1 million, you see a difference on the rate that goes down to the $3,774. But then it's at $3.20 per thousand. So again, it's looking at, at the total cost and taking the larger sum lump and then a smaller amount per thousand going above that. So and, and it's, it's the way that CMS had come up with that, which, which is again. Both of these whatever are definitely more in line than, than what it was before.
This is the thing that they're doing.
Jason, let's speak.
Well, I was just going to clarify, this is the same. Statistics they're using for 50 other cities.
Evidently, that's what, what Ryland said or.
Twenty-one cities right now, but.
Twenty-one.
So if I may, real quick, I want to kind of keep us on track here. We're looking at three different things, first off, removing the current building permit section as it sits. And then the second would be to add the building permit pricing from CMS that was not previously on there. If we want to discuss changing pricing, we're going to have to do something separate because we have a contract with CMS to use their pricing. So just so you guys are aware of that. And then third is then adding into zoning fees in the separate zoning section, just so we can kind of stay on track and make sure we've, we've got to focus us to where we're going.
With that, I make a motion that we remove the current. Building permits section from our 2024 minutes for a fee schedule. And add the CMS price sheet. That is for building permit pricing, that's on the recommended sheet. I mean, with building dash 00 through building dash 20.
Are you talking about this, Ryland?
No, no, we're talking about.
We're talking about the proposed city of Orinoco.
That's the one.
Residents, yeah.
The recommended one.
So we're, we're removing. This section that's in the current one, building permits, replacing it with this one here.
Right.
And with that, I also make a motion that we add CMS city zoning fees.
Do one at a time.
One at a time, okay. So the motion is remove the building permit and add the CMS section, building permits, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And that's because we're under contract right now, is that right, correct, Jason?
Yeah, so that's why we have those pricings, that's why I use those pricings, because of the contract that we have, they still related. And these are their current pricings as of April 1st for 2024 that I'm putting in here. There may be with the cost that I put in my memo, those I believe were used off of the prices from the 2023 ones. Quite different, if I remember right from math. So, yeah, that's there, it's our new current one that we have. Again, we have the pricing based on the contract that we have with them.
So as a discussion part of that, I, I understand since we do have that contract with CMS right now that that would be the case. I'd also like to still continue to get the competitive pricing that we have, that we have requested. So we know what some of those fees might be from other companies that we don't now have that, that information on.
We can do that, takes a lot of staff time, I'm sure CMS did a lot of that survey and too to come up with.
We would still like, Paul had requested that back for that meeting if there was before, so I, I, I again. We'll, we'll bring that, that I think we need to have that.
What was the second company of the state county?
We have Minstat.
Minstat?
Minstat.
Minspec.
Minspec, I'm sorry.
To be myself, I think the main thing is that we have a contract, we're relying on their experience, that's their business. And I think that's the right thing we should be doing for our citizens, so.
We had to stand that, but back when, in January, the discussion was we had no other competitive bids. From other than CMS's bid to know what, what their fees were according to industry standards. There's nothing to compare them to. So I just thought it was fair, be fair to our citizens, make sure we have something to compare it to.
I agree.
I agree too.
We're at today with CMS, so I think we need to honor that contract too, so.
I agree with that, I just wanted to make, make note that we needed.
We'll follow up on it.
Okay, we got it, we got to do that, okay, so.
Any other comments? It's been all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same saying? Next item on our agenda was the city zoning fees, which is. Picking up the ones from the Homestead County. That's in your packet. One residential and multiple family, non-residential. I make a motion, we add those two sections to our. Fee schedule under the zoning section.
Which parts were they, Ryland? Those two, just those two.
Right, those are zoning fees, right.
So there's actually going to be a rebate coming back, I believe, both. Two Sisters on that and also for Glenn's. And we also need to review Glenn's as well for what the building permit fees, where is Glenn's too?
That's on our agenda.
Right, okay.
Second on the motion.
I'll do a second on that.
Thank you, okay. So this is a. The zoning fees from Homestead County is the same as what Byron uses because they use Homestead County planning services, so. That's, I think those are. And I'm guessing, yeah. Any other comments with those? Saying none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those.
See, it's just these top two sections, you're correct.
Yes. That's what's in your packet, Mark. Next item on our agenda was the reimbursement. That Jason made reference to in his memo for. Ben keys was the, or. A refund of. Really $7,640.05.
Both these are based off of the Homestead County fees.
I make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Any other comments regarding Ben keys? Any keys, signify saying? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likewise, Glenn's, water coach. Reimbursement for $28,259.80.
Make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Any other comments? Saying none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right.
Make a motion during your. Second.
I am the best one to hug.
You want a drink though?